We're gonna get started. Members will take their seat. All visitors retire behind the rail. We can have our invocation. And to give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Lieutenant Colonel Janet Banfield from the Salvation Army. The Lieutenant Colonel is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Maria Kiyonis Sanchez. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we acknowledge your presence among us just now. We recognize you as the Creator, Preserver, and Governor of all things. And we pause to give thanks for your blessings to us this day. We offer prayer for the leaders of our country, this state, those gathered in this room. And we humbly ask, Lord, that you would grant them wisdom for the business which is before them. Give them compassion and strength for the work of this day. You ask us very simply to love you, to love others. As they deliberate this day and work, I pray that they will keep those goals in mind. Along with the words of the prophet Jeremiah who said, "To work for good, for justice, learn to do good, help the down and out, stand up for the homeless, and go to bat for the defenseless." Thank you for the privilege of serving others, our neighbors. Be with us and bless us this day. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Chair, thanks to Lieutenant Colonel for those spiritual words. Thank you very much. Council will be at ease. Thank you, and again, thank you for your spiritual advice. The next order of business is approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May tenth, 2018, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May tenth, 2018, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. That the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May tenth, 2018, stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that Journal is approved. And the next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. And the Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Would like to ask if anyone has a device, cellphone or other, if it makes any noise, please turn it off or turn it on silent. Thank you very much for your cooperation. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome, and I want to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness the government in action. I hope your stay here is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. Again, thank you for being here. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee, who presented a resolution on my behalf honoring and congratulating, recognizing, the Masterman School team. With Ms. Jessica Brown and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Greenlee, we have Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Bass, and Councilman Derek Green.
Hello, everybody. How are you?
Councilman, please proceed. Hold on, hold on. Folks, can we have a little quiet, please? Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's certainly a pleasure to honor one of our great public schools here in the city of Philadelphia. This is a resolution honoring, congratulating, and recognizing the Masterman School team for being named world finalists in the Odyssey of the Mind International Competition. Whereas Odyssey of the Mind is an internationally creativity competition that synthesizes science, technology, engineering, and the arts. And whereas Odyssey of the Mind has been encouraging students around the world to think outside the box and work together as a team to solve challenging problems since 1978. And whereas the Julia R. Masterman Schools Odyssey of the Mind team competed in the programs Division III, the ninth through the twelfth grades, in a problem called Triathlon Travels. And...
Whereas, the Masterman School team comprises students from a number of Philadelphia public schools, including Masterman High School ninth-grade student Drew Brown, Central High School eleventh-grade student Tilly Donovan, Masterman High School eleventh-grade student Louise Yodache, Masterman High School eleventh-grade student Abigail Layton, Science Leadership Academy eleventh-grade student Sophia Powers, Central High School ninth-grade student Ariel Weinbaum, and Central High School eleventh-grade student Rose Weinbaum. The team is coached by parent Brett Mandell and by parent and Powell Elementary School teacher Chris Powers. And whereas, this problem challenges students to construct and drive an original vehicle in an Odyssey-style triathlon, where they try to score in a curling task, hit the right targets in a jousting task, and navigate a course in two directions in a track task. And... After placing first in the southeastern Pennsylvania regional competition held at Pinsbury High School on March the third, 2018, the team placed first in the Pennsylvania State Finals, held at Pocono Mountain East High School on April seventeenth of this year. Whereas, at the Pennsylvania State Finals, the team won a coveted Renata Fosca Creativity Award for demonstrating exceptional creativity in two ways. First, in the design of their vehicle propulsion system, which adopted mechanical principles of a rowing machine, Councilman Jones, by using bicycle chains, sprockets, bungee cords, and one-way ratchet wrenches to propel the vehicle forward and in reverse. And second, by using a magnetic field to repel targets, thus knocking them over without affecting adjacent obstacles.
Whereas, the Division II team won the Renata Fosca Award for Ultimate Creativity, the highest award in Odyssey, by creating a performance about the inner working of the human body that included a train-of-thought fan car, a blood vessel boat that traveled in a bloodstream, and a walking neuron. And whereas, approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty teams will represent their area in the largest creative problem-solving program in the world in Ames, Iowa, from May twenty-third through twenty-sixth of this year. This year is the thirty-ninth World Finals and the tenth time being hosted by Iowa State University and the Ames Convention and Business Bureau. And...
Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby honor, congratulate, and recognize the school team for being named world finalists in the Odyssey of the Mind International Competition. And be it further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to the Masterman School Odyssey of the Mind team as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. This resolution was introduced by myself on behalf of Council President Clark and is co-sponsored by all members of City Council. Good luck, congratulations, and go get 'em in the finals.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Brown for remarks.
Good morning. I'm Jessica Brown, proud principal of Masterman, and I wanted to say a huge congratulations to these students for all of their hard work. They've worked countless hours and also get good grades in school and do myriad of activities like sports and arts. So, a really big congratulations. They'll move on to the World Finals, so we wish them much success. I also want to thank the parents, Brett Mandell, and there's some parents out here that have also worked countless hours to help these students, and I appreciate all of their support. Problem-solving and creativity is the wave of the future, and I know that these students will lead Philadelphia in that direction. So, congratulations.
Council will be at ease. Thank you, and again, congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiyonis Sanchez, who presented a resolution recognizing and honoring the Salvation Army. With Reverend Kamadi and Lieutenant Colonel Banfield and those accompanying them, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman O., Councilman Don, and Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, folks. I want to take a moment to personally acknowledge my joining officially the Army, which is the Salvation Army. As many of you know, when Hurricane Irma and Maria hit Puerto Rico, many of us here and many of folks here in this room rallied together to help Puerto Rico and the U.S. Virgin Islands. I have always been a supporter of the Salvation Army. Reverend Bonnie Kamada, who joins us every weekend, every week, is in D.C. lobbying because this is National Salvation Army Week in Washington, D.C., so she's doing what she does every day, which is be a champion for the Army. But in all of the years that I've supported the Salvation Army, never realizing the tremendous impact of the hard work that has to be done during these natural disasters. And over the last year, we have worked with them, both here in Philadelphia, transitioning families, but the work that they are doing in Puerto Rico through their offices, through their food distribution network, it is amazing. And this Monday, I had an opportunity to join them at their annual luncheon. And I can personally say to you that not only are they doing God's work, but they're doing work under tough conditions and bringing spiritual relief, food, nourishment, and hope to sometimes when people feel the most hopeless. And as someone from Puerto Rico, I'm eternally grateful for the work that they are doing and very, very happy that here in Philadelphia, we have such a good group of the Salvation Army leadership. And so with that, as part of this National Salvation Army Week, the second week of May, which was first declared by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1954, where he was quoted as saying, "Among Americans, the Salvation Army has long been a symbol of wholehearted dedication to the cause of human brotherhood and sisterhood. Their work has been a constant reminder to us all that each of us is neighbor and kin to all Americans, given freely of themselves, the men and women of the Salvation Army have won the respect of us all." And whereas founded in London, England in 1865, the Salvation Army has represented hope to millions of people in need worldwide for more than a hundred-and-fifty years. The Salvation Army is one of the world's largest and oldest providers of social services, currently existing in a hundred-and-twenty-eight countries, with operations in the United States originating in Philadelphia since 1879. It continues its compassionate tradition of helping others where there is poverty, hunger, disease, destitution, and spiritual need. And...
Whereas, the Salvation Army's Emergency Disaster Services provides basic needs and services to victims of disaster, while also assisting first responders. Serving one-to-two million Americans in dozens of response efforts nationwide, Emergency Disaster Services is often one of the first on-the-scene to aid emergency response efforts by providing food, shelter, clothing, and spiritual comfort. Through its valuable partnership with the city of Philadelphia, the Salvation Army's Emergency Disaster Services is proud to support local first responders and disaster survivors in more than two-hundred-and-fifty annual responses in times of disaster or crisis. Most recently, the Salvation Army played a critical role in transporting goods and assisting the victims of Hurricane Maria in Puerto Rico as they collaborated with Unidos PAPR to bring relief efforts to the island. And whereas, the Salvation Army continually strives to be a beacon of hope for thousands of individuals and families throughout the greater Philadelphia, enriching and transforming lives of those in the greatest of need. Over the past year, the Salvation Army Greater Philadelphia provided more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand meals to those facing the threat of hunger, over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand collective nights of shelter to homeless individuals and families, more than thirty thousand local individuals with case management support and linkage to resources to help them in times of crisis, assistance to eleven thousand individuals during the holiday season, including more than twenty-five thousand toys and gifts, so families in need could have the Christmas they deserve. And...
Through a network of community centers, residential facilities, and volunteers, the Salvation Army is able to help reach every zip code across the greater Philadelphia region, offering a myriad of social services, including but not limited to shelter for the homeless, food for the hungry, anti-human trafficking programs, emergency disaster relief, drug and alcohol rehabilitation, early childhood development, after-school arts, music, and educational programs, recreational opportunities, job training, job placement, activities for older adults, and spiritual development. The Salvation Army continually strives to be a beacon of hope for thousands of individuals and families throughout our greater Philadelphia region, enriching and transforming lives of those in the greatest need. And...
Whereas, on May fourteenth, 2018, the Salvation Army Greater Philadelphia hosted its annual luncheon at the Westin Hotel Philadelphia, this year's theme being "Celebrate Hope," where it recognized Unidos PAPR, along with Charmaine Matlock Turner, President and CEO of the Urban Affairs Coalition. Unidos PAPR received the Doing the Most Good Community Leadership Award, named for the distinguished men, women, or organization whose direction and compassion reflected the Salvation Army's mission. And...
Therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes, honors, and celebrates the Salvation Army for their dedicated and loyal service to the city of Philadelphia, Puerto Rico, and throughout the country, assisting those in need following hardships. Be further resolved that an engrossed copy of the resolution will be presented to the Salvation Army as evidence of our sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Lieutenant Colonel Banfield for remarks.
Thank you to my friends here on the platform, to each of you before me. The young ladies that were here just prior to this, who were recognized for their service and their ingenuity, reminded me that the Salvation Army in Philadelphia began with a sixteen-year-old girl who came from London, England, because she had a commitment to God and a commitment to neighbors, her neighbors. She took a boat, arrived here after a month in transit, began in a shoe factory in Philadelphia, and from there, in 1879, the Salvation Army in the United States began. And now, is across the country in nearly every zip code. Last year, served thirty million Americans. And as you've already heard, it's our commitment to help those who have the most need, and it's our promise to do the most good to them. We do this with your support and your help, in partnership with the government officials, with community leaders, with neighbors, and as our uniform, the S's say, we are saved by God to serve neighbors. So it is our commitment to do the most good to the most people in the most need. It's our privilege, and we thank you for this honor this day. God bless you.
Council will be at ease. Thank you, and congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Taubmanberger.
Council President, thank you very much. As many of you may know, that Frankfurt, Germany and Philadelphia are sister cities. The Germans consider the relationship ein Partnerstadt, a partner city. And we are very proud to host a delegation from Frankfurt, Germany, led by Dr. Richter. Dr. Richter, if you would please stand up.
Welcome.
And get the acknowledgement from our council. And accompanying Dr. Richter is also a city council member from the city of Frankfurt, which has a very large city council. They have ninety-two city council people, and one of them is with us today, and that's Councilmember Morella Dorn. Morella Dorn, please. Ein herzliches Willkommen zur Stadt Philadelphia. And just a little tiny bit of a commercial. The city of Frankfurt is sending their soccer team in July fourteenth. I hope many of you can attend. The proceeds to that event are going to help young people from the city of Philadelphia travel to our various sister cities throughout the world. So your support of that is very important. And coming from a fellow councilman, Curtis Jones, who always likes to have sports as a little bit of a rivalry, I think we found one, and we look forward to it. So thank you for being here. Feeling dank.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Our next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Charter of Arms delivers the messages from the Chief Clerk. From the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Road Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendations of the City Planet Commission on the following bill, Bill Number 180350. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body and ordinance revising parking regulations on Pine Street between South Broad Street and South Front Street, and an ordinance revising parking regulations on Spruce Street between South Broad Street and South Twenty-Second Street, and an ordinance revising parking regulations on Spruce Street between South Twenty-Second Street and Fifteenth Street, and an ordinance revising parking regulations on Spruce Street between South Broad Street and South Second Street, and an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer to enter into an amendment agreement with Citizens Bank of Pennsylvania for provision of payroll banking services to the city, and an ordinance amending Chapter 10500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Property Damaging, Defacing, and Interfering With" to prohibit camping on property without the owner's permission. And an ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code by amendment to Sections A503 entitled "Prosecution" and A601 entitled "Fines" of the Philadelphia Administrative Code to provide for assessment of an additional penalty in connection with repeated abatements of unlawful conditions on vacant and exterior properties. And an ordinance to amend the master plan for the River Road Residential Mixed Use Area bonded by the Montgomery County Line, a railroad redway, Shamont Avenue, and the Skookle River, to approve a subdivision and the construction of a utility project. And an ordinance authorizing the Director of Planning and Development on behalf of the city to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a community development block grant, to file applications to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and to apply for housing opportunities for persons with AIDS grant, and to file applications with the Commonwealth to obtain grants under the Act of April twelve, 1956. And an ordinance authorizing the execution, delivery, and performance by the Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation on behalf of the Philadelphia Gas Works of two amended and restated service agreements for gas transportation service under rate schedule FT with Transcontinental Gas Pipeline Corporation. And an ordinance approving the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement between Philadelphia and... agreement between Philadelphia Gas Works by the Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation solely in its capacity as operator or manager of the city-owned Philadelphia Gas Works, and 1101 Chestnut Street Limited Partnership for certain premises located at 1137 Chestnut Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Those messages will be printed in today's journal. The next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, I offered one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14600 entitled "Use Regulations" by amending exceptions to use tables for green roofs and making related changes.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing June 4th through June 9th, 2018, as Philly Real Estate Week in the City of Philadelphia and celebrating its founder, Nicole Purvey.
This is the calendar. She recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce four bills, one of which is on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment agreement with Citizens Bank of Pennsylvania for provision of payroll banking services to the city, and an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" to provide for procedures for the administrative review process, and an ordinance authorizing the construction of a sewer and a pertinent work required to provide public sewer service in a portion of the 4200 block of Regent Square, and an ordinance authorizing the Director of Planning and Development on behalf of the city to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Community Development Block Grant, to file applications to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and to apply for housing opportunities for persons with AIDS grant.
Those four bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be reported to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the Thirty-seventh Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Counsel President. Today, I offer four bills and two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Overlay Zoning Districts" by creating a new overlay entitled FAO, Frankfurt Academy Overlay District, and an ordinance amending Chapter 15600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Parks and Playgrounds" by adding a new Section 15606 entitled "Philadelphia Pre-K Parks and Playgrounds," relating to construction standards in proximity to Philadelphia pre-K providers, and an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Bluegrass Road, Grant Avenue, Ashton Road, Willets Road, Welsh Road, Dewey Street, Revere Street, Tremont Street, Leonard Street, and Welsh Road, and an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" by revising Section 14303, 11A, entitled "Registered Community Organizations" by providing funding for limited insurance coverage for registered community organizations.
Those four bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be reported, referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing May 20 to May 26, 2018, as National Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Philadelphia, and further honoring Philadelphia Paramedic of the Year David Reynolds and Philadelphia EMT of the Year Emily Serrano.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling upon the School District of Philadelphia to guarantee access to traditional yellow school bus transportation for seventh and eighth grade students attending the School District of Philadelphia, schools of the Archdiocese of Philadelphia, and other eligible educational institutions.
And that will be on next week's calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer six bills and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Heverford Avenue, Felton Street, Arch Street, and Grove Street, and an ordinance to amend the master plan for the River Road Residential Mixed-Use Area bounded by the Montgomery County Line, a railroad right-of-way, Shawmont Avenue, and the Schuylkill River, to approve a subdivision and the construction of a utility project, and an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Conrad Street, Indian Queen Lane, Scotts Lane, and Crawford Street, and an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land, together with the improvements they're on, located in and about the area bounded by Schuylkill, the Schuylkill River Trail, Haggis Mill Road, and Port Royal Avenue, and an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" by creating a new Wissahican NCO, Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District for the area generally bounded by Henry Avenue, Hermitage Street, Ridge Avenue, and the Wissahican Creek, and an ordinance amending Section 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Overlay Zoning Districts" by amending the subsection entitled "NCA, Ridge Avenue Neighborhood Commercial Area Overlay," and making related changes.
Those six bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be reported to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Dr. Stefan Spinelli for eleven years of dedicated leadership as Chancellor of Jefferson University and as President of the former Philadelphia University.
And that will be on today's calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Counsel President, I have six bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 14503 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "NCA, Neighborhood Commercial Area Overlay" by adding a new subsection entitled "South Broad Street Gateway", and an ordinance revising parking regulations on Pine Street between South Broad Street and South Front Street, and an ordinance revising parking regulations on Spruce Street between South Twenty-Second Street and Fifteenth Street, and an ordinance revising parking regulations on Spruce Street between South Broad Street and South Second Street, and an ordinance amending Section 14303 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Common Procedures and Requirements" to amend requirements regarding neighborhood notice and meetings, and an ordinance revising parking regulations on Pine Street between South Broad Street and South Twenty-Second Street.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. Those six bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three bills, three non-privileged resolutions, and one privilege.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Leeper Street, Oxford Avenue, Harrison Street, Oakland Street, and Falkrod Street, and an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designation of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Godfrey Avenue, Castor Avenue, and Fillmore Street, and an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designation of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Allegheny Avenue, Kensington Avenue, Lehigh Avenue, and Second Street.
Those three bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Salvation Army for their dedicated service to the City of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling for the creation of a School Building and Facilities Task Force which shall review, assess, and recommend capital needs and priorities of the Philadelphia School District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the Nineteenth Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city-owned lots or pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the Seventh Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And also next week's calendar. She recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Counsel President. I have one bill today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the execution, delivery, and performance by the Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation on behalf of the Philadelphia Gas Works of two amended and restated service agreements for gas transportation service under rate schedule FT with Transcontinental Gas Pipeline Corporation.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill that's co-sponsored by Councilman Heenan, and would like to be recognized when the title's read.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled "The Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code" by amending Sections A503 entitled "Prosecution" and A601 entitled "Fines" of the Philadelphia Administrative Code to provide for assessment of an additional penalty in connection with repeated abatements of unlawful conditions on vacant and exterior properties.
She recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. In 2017, there was a front-page story in the Philadelphia Daily News that was entitled "The Stinky House," and it was about a home in northwest Philadelphia where an absentee landlord had refused to maintain the property. Residents, because of the horrific smells, thought that there was something inside dead. They didn't know if it was a human and/or an animal. Obviously, thanks to the work of Clip here, and even some residents in that community, we were able to get the issue addressed, but I just want to say for the record, since that time, the residents who live in that area, along with Clip, have been maintaining the property. And so what this bill would do is, it applies a $100 penalty if Clip is called out to abate a property more than once in a twelve-month period. Currently, the fine is, the individual is subject to a fine of no less than $150 and not more than $300 for each offense. So what this bill does, Mr. President, is in essence, put another tool in the toolbox relative to reducing blight and neighborhood preservation, particularly for those folks who own properties in the City of Philadelphia but live outside our city and really don't care about our quality of life. And so our hope is that this will incentivize landlords outside and property owners outside of Philadelphia to maintain their properties. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You added an additional $100 to it. I'll vote for it. All right? The Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Counsel President, and I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Parker, for all her hard work, and I mean, this is a direct response of, you know, constituents in all our neighborhoods across the city of Philadelphia. And if you're an absentee landlord and you're willfully, willfully, all right, violating the law and not maintaining your properties two times in one year, well then, we don't want you here in the City of Philadelphia, so, all right, the penalty is go somewhere else, all right, go take advantage of other people who you are predatory, you know, selecting to destroy the quality of life and hate the health and safety standards of the City of Philadelphia. So, you know, I think this is a step in the right direction. I mean, we are abating properties after properties after properties constantly, especially during the summer months, and if you willfully leave your house and disrepair and create a public health problem and safety issue for our neighborhoods, all right, well then, we don't want you here. At least, that's my opinion, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
A privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the City Council's Committee on Technology and Information Services to hold hearings to examine and evaluate the City of Philadelphia's security of information technology, as well as to identify additional measures and best practices in order to prevent criminal misuse of information technologies.
And that will be on today's calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Taubmanberger.
Morning, Counsel President. I have no bills or resolutions this morning.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three bills and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 9631 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Tobacco Retailer Permit" by limiting the power of the Board of Health to regulate the transferability of current permits and the locations of current tobacco retailers, and by removing the transfer restrictions of Section 9631, Subparagraph 2, Subparagraph D, and an ordinance amending Chapter 10500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Property Damaging, Defacing, and Interfering With" to prohibit camping on property without the owner's permission, and an ordinance approving a Fourth Amendment to lease agreement between Philadelphia Gas Works by Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation solely in its capacity as operator and manager of the city-owned Philadelphia Gas Works, and 1101 Chestnut Street Limited Partnership for certain premises located at 1137 Chestnut Street.
Those three bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the Twenty-Fifth Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Brother Ron Armour, Trupita Mason, Keith Schenk, Michelle Kerr-Spry, Pastor Alex Velazquez Jr., and Laquain Vu for their significant contributions to advocacy and community service in northwest Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I offer one non-privileged resolution, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Janie Blackwell and Councilman Derek Reed.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
A non-privileged resolution respectfully requesting that Governor Wolf grant a pardon to Eric Riddick in consideration of his evidence establishing his innocence.
And that will be on next week's calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business will be reports from committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Squill for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports fourteen bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 171114 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of the 6,000 block of Van Dyke Street, and Bill Number 180171 entitled an ordinance amending Section 9208 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Sidewalk Cafes," by permitting sidewalk cafes to be maintained on Frankfurt Avenue, both sides from Bligh Avenue to Wellington Street, and Cotman Avenue, both sides from Frankfurt Avenue to Leon Street, and Bill Number 180285 entitled an ordinance authorizing the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania to install on and maintain various encroachments at One Convention Avenue, and Bill Number 180287 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades in a portion of City Plan Number 72, by relocating the southeasterly house line and curb line of a portion of Carson Street between Baker Street and Silverwood Street, thereby widening said Carson Street and a portion of the cartway thereof, and Bill Number 180288 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades in a portion of City Plan Numbers 52S and 53S in the area lying southeast of Penrose Avenue and southwest of 26th Street, by striking from the city plan and vacating an irregularly shaped portion of the right-of-way of Penrose Avenue along the southeasterly side thereof, relocating a portion of the southeasterly local service roadway of Penrose Avenue from 26th Street to a point southwesterly therefrom, and placing on the city plan a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes, and Bill Number 180289 entitled an ordinance legalizing an existing building and awning encroachment at 2101 Reed Street, and Bill Number 180290 entitled an ordinance authorizing the paving of the relocated southeasterly local service roadway of Penrose Avenue from 26th Street to a point approximately 1,323 feet southwesterly therefrom, and Bill Number 180291 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Red Lion Road from Jamison Avenue to Northeast Avenue, and Bill Number 180292 entitled an ordinance legalizing an existing building encroachment and proposed building encroachment at 1332 Reed Street, and Bill Number 180294 entitled an ordinance establishing a one-ray regulation on Conlon Street from Worcester Street to North 21st Street eastbound, and Bill Number 180369 entitled an ordinance amending Section 9 of an ordinance, Bill Number 150377 approved June 18, 2015, as amended by Bill Number 160566, approved June 16, 2016, and Bill Number 170566 approved July 11, 2017, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Construction, Ownership, and Maintenance of Various Encroachments Into the Right-of-Way of Market Street, Filbert Street, 11th Street, 10th Street, 9th Street, and 8th Street, and Authorizing the Assignment of Certain Rights With Respect to an Overhead Pedestrian Bridge Above Filbert Street West of the House Line of 9th Street to Be Assigned, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions by Further Authorizing the Streets Department to Approve Encroachments Consistent with Plans Approved by the Philadelphia City Planning Commission and the City of Philadelphia Art Commission, by Extending the Time for Compliance with the Authorization Conditions therein, and Bill Number 180386 entitled an ordinance authorizing Marty Incorporated Doing Business as La Bus Bistro to Install, Own, and Maintain an Open-Air Sidewalk Cafe at 4201 Reed Avenue, and Bill Number 180394 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Bennett Road from Roosevelt Boulevard to its terminus further northwesterly therefrom, and Bill Number 180422 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Phillies to Construct, Own, and Maintain Encroachments Consisting of Security Ballards, Permanent Operable Barricades, and Removable Barricades with Permanent and removable barricades with permanent foundations along and adjacent to Citizens Bank Park located at One Citizens Bank Way. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And chair, one more time, recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so that it permit the first reading this day of the 14 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended. So as to permit this day, first reading on the 14 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for a report from the Committee on Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Public Safety reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Public Safety, to which is referred Bill Number 170, 244, entitled an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code by amending Chapter 1200 entitled Traffic Control Devices to require a report, recommendation, and appropriate safety improvements regarding hazardous intersections. And by amending Chapter 12, 1400, entitled penalties and procedure for violations to provide for a reward program, all under certain terms and conditions to prevent against accidents of pedestrian-related deaths, particularly those caused by vehicles that unlawfully passed trolleys or failed to yield to emergency response vehicles. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 170, 244.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading today of Bills Number 170, 244. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee. And the next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar today, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill Numbers 180, 467, 180, 468, 180, 469, 180, 472, 180, 475, 180, 476, 180, 477, 180, 350, 171, 125. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you. If there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, we will now have our public comment session. Before considering these resolutions and bills, we will consider public comment as follows. If you have an interest in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar today, if you have not already done so, I'd ask that you please sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium, and on that podium, there's a device. When that light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. And when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Like to thank you in advance for your adhering to our rules and regulations as it relates to public comment. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Anna Vien-Yugan. Commenting on 171, 125.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am here to testify on Bill Number 171, 125. Good morning, members of city council. My name is Anna Vien-Wing, and I'm a senior at JR Masterman High School. Thank you for providing me with this incredible opportunity to be here and express my feelings for Councilwoman Taubmanberger's bill. I'm excited that my voice was valued enough to be possibly turned into legislation. Thank you for caring, not only about me, but also about the public health of the entire city of brotherly love. I do not think it is fair that the well-being of some citizens is negatively affected by the habits of others. Customers of the southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority are suffering from secondhand smoke when they wait for a bus or a subway. Twenty-seven percent of Philadelphians rely on SEPTA to get to school, to get to work, to run important errands. Another problem is that riders cannot step away from a bus stop or train platform when there is a smoker present because that is the exact location at which the bus or subway will stop. Some citizens, like me, suffer from respiratory illnesses such as asthma, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, or even lung cancer. Those especially at risk are Philadelphia's children and senior citizens. I was born with a congenital diaphragm hernia and have lived with asthma my entire life. I take the subway and the bus to and from school every day, and I cough a lot, have trouble breathing, and sometimes throw up because of the looming cigarette smoke when I am waiting. In November of last year, I ended up in the hospital for two days due to a severe asthma attack. While in the hospital, I was treated with steroid medicine, which caused me to gain a significant amount of weight, and I am currently trying to maintain my current state of health and not gain any more weight. After being discharged, I was not permitted to go to school for another week. When I finally returned to school, the doctors instructed me to take the elevators instead of walking up the stairs to get to class. I still have to take the bus and subway to school every day. Allowing people to smoke at transportation centers and bus stops is making my condition worse, not better. This is a current conspicuous problem, but can you imagine what the long-term detrimental effects on my lungs will be when I get older if I continue to inhale secondhand smoke day by day? I plead you to pass this bill to ban smoking at SEPTA public transportation centers, including Alney, Fern Rock, Frankfurt, and City Hall, and sheltered bus stops that have at least one enclosed side. Once again, thank you so much for giving me your precious time and hearing me speak. From one Philadelphia native to another, I truly hope that my voice and opinions will help others and reach a higher level, but my voice needs your yes vote to be successful and make change happen, not only for me, not only for you, but it is also for the public health of the entire city.
Thank you. We'll wrap it up here. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Linda Aldridge. Commenting on 180, 469.
Good morning.
Morning. I am here on behalf of the bill that was passed, 180, 469, in reference to my family member from 13th Street between Fishwater and Catherine Street, Louise Hannibal, which is known by mommy. Louise Hannibal was born and raised, actually raised, in the South Philadelphia area where she was an activist in her community, how she loved her family as well as her neighbors in her community. She took to heart as a mission that she was given from God to service the people and the needs that they are in need of. So I thank God that I have the privilege today to come and just give thanks to council members.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming down.
Joe Denahell. Commenting on 180, 467, 180, 468, 180, 477, 160, 720, 171, 131, and 180, 350.
Morning.
Morning. This is an official decree of the people and written by and damaged quote warranto, and as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council mayor and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally. Can people trust council mayor and others when they stole my home, steal my just compensation, and the dignity of owning my home? As public servants, you are bound by oath constitution law so that you do not become the legalized version of the criminals, as Jefferson stated. Where is your pride that the sovereign people hired you? Do you steal from your employer, the sovereign people? Does monumental corruption or voter fraud allow your continued reelection? Does Rico-style conspiracy to deny rights allow corruption to exist? Has Attorney General, Governor, and DA refused their sworn duty to act? My deed was transferred without compensation, due process, Seventh Amendment, trial by jury, violating Constitution and laws. If committing one crime one time would land people in jail, why has there been no prosecution? The Constitution's require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of clothes, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two U.S.C., 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C., 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 11, 26 P.A., CSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056, appear violating. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and the legal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue, the denial of God-given 42 U.S.C., 1982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color-all government must have its charter government revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath constitution laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath constitution or law. I remind council, takes law cooperation to create and allow monument corruption.
Thank you for your testimony.
Treen Smith. Commenting on 170, 408.
And all else that applies to justice and righteousness, as I stand in agreement with this brother right in every word.
Ma'am, just state your name for the record.
Well, she said it. Treen Smith.
Thank you.
Yes. I want to say that I stand in agreement with this gentleman that just spoke before me, and more power to the righteous. I'm standing here as a representative for the people, by the people, and I know this and recognize that all across this country, there's a lot of corruption and a lot of people that are not really standing for the people, and there we have a problem. And as I stand in agreement with Councilwoman Gimm's bill and Councilwoman Reynolds' bill regarding our children, which I recognize that not only in this city, but all across the country, there's been this great suppression of education. My daughter just graduated full scholarship from Emory University, and I have to pat myself on the back for being one who believes in education. However, it was really rough in this city when you look around and there were so many different things going on, and we seen at the end that they was closing schools down. You look at the correlation of all of this and all this redevelopment, and I don't like to use the word justification because it's a politically correct nicety. It's aggressive assault and displacement against black, brown bodies, families, and communities. And I say this to say, this country is going to fall if we continue to go this way. There's no other way. There's no other way to see us going forward if people don't operate in just ideology. And you know what? I'm so sick of everything that this gentleman just said. Can we all just do better for the people, by the people? Stop allowing greed and control to run your lives. Those of y'all, and I'm speaking to those who live that way, those who live a just life and a righteous life and who really work hard to do right by the people. I'm not talking to you. So I'm talking to the people who are straddling the fence or who just right out are evil, and they know that at their core, they are not for justice and righteousness. And on that note, I want to say that this bill regarding the suspension of first graders through fifth graders, to me, is just another plan to suppress black people moving forward, and I ask that y'all do the right thing to help black people burst forth from this oppressive system because y'all have a part to play in that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment session. We will now move to our calendar. Excuse me. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of 180, 467?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redemptional Authority without consideration deeds conveyed conditional fee simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 32nd Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180, 467 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180, 468.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2022 Kimball Street, located in the East Second Councilmatic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180, 468 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180, 469.
A resolution also naming South 13th Street between Fitzwater Street and Catherine Streets, Louise Hannibal Way, in recognition of the positive impact that Miss Hannibal had on her neighborhood and the city of Philadelphia.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180, 469 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180, 472.
A resolution authorizing requests to the Law Department to represent city council in appeals from decisions of the Philadelphia Zoning Board of Adjustment, and if the Law Department declines to render such services to city council, authorizing the retention of outside council to provide such services.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez.
Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 180, 472 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180, 475.
A resolution also naming South 13th Street between Walnut and Locust Streets as Edith Windsor Way.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 180, 475 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180, 476.
A resolution calling for a Philadelphia historic marker on the campus of Temple University on the northeast corner of 13th Street and Cecil B. Moore Avenue to commemorate Edith Edith Windsor with a dedication on September 12, 2018, the first anniversary of her passing.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 180, 476 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180, 477.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 45, 46 North Marvine Street, located in the 8th Councilmatic District.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. 180, 477 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 180, 350.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire free simple title or lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land located in and about the area bounded by Castor Avenue, Loretto Avenue, Elgin Avenue, and Bligh Avenue.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Don. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squill. Councilman Taubmanberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present. Voting in affirmed that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 171, 125.
And ordinance amending Section 10, 602 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Smoking by adding smoking restrictions at certain bus stops.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Don. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kiwanis Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squill, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are seventeen, and ayes are zero. Majority of members present. Voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing June fourth through June ninth, two thousand and eighteen, as Philly Real Estate Week in the city of Philadelphia and celebrating its founder, Nicole Purvey, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing May twenty to May twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen, as National Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Philadelphia, and further honoring Philadelphia Paramedic of the Year David Reynolds and Philadelphia EMT of the Year Emily Serrano, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Dr. Stefan Spinelli for eleven years of dedicated leadership as chancellor of Jefferson University and as president of the former Philadelphia University, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Salvation Army for their dedicated service to the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Kiwanis Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiwanis Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing city council's committee on technology and information services to hold hearings to examine and evaluate the city of Philadelphia's security of information technology, as well as to identify additional measures and best practices in order to prevent criminal misuse of information technologies, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Brother Ron Armour, Trupita Mason, Keith Schenk, Michelle Kerr-Spry, Pastor Alex Velazquez Junior, and Laquan Crayon Boo for their significant contributions to advocacy and community service in Northwest Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage count, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Any speeches on behalf of the minority? Any speeches on behalf of the majority? Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. Uh, this afternoon, uh, the Committee on Children and Youth will hold a hearing on a couple of issues regarding juvenile justice. Um, I want to first acknowledge the work of many of my colleagues who've been working on this issue for a long time, including Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, but we're taking a look at the institutional placement of young people in out-of-county placements. Many of the young people are going to speak today, several of them, and they're going to talk about their experiences, including solitary confinement, strip searches, illegal restraints, um, lack of educational issues. And, you know, I really do want to acknowledge, uh, the cosponsors of the hearing, Reynolds Brown, Johnson, Heenan, Green, Parker, Jones, Dom Taubinberger, Greenlee, Kiwanis Sanchez, and Blackwell, um, all of whom I know, uh, care deeply about this issue, and, uh, we want to see us do better. I think we have a good chance of doing that today. Um, we, I think we're going to be on a pretty good page with our city agencies about what we can do to move forward and see some change happen for young people who really need it. So I want to thank and invite everybody to come, um, or watch it on, uh, on PHL Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes, uh, Councilman Taubinberger.
Council President, just a quick announcement, and it really is for, uh, my, my colleagues. Uh, with the delegation in, uh, from Germany led by Dr. Jürgen Richter and city council member Marla Dorn, uh, immediately after, we're going to take a photograph. If any would like to be part of that, we would be honored to have you together because we really want to make this sister-city relationship between Frankfurt and Germany, uh, Frankfurt and Philadelphia work real well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Your Council President, uh, immediately after the photo, is the opportunity for all council members and staff to join us in the caucus room with a briefing with the Engineers' Club of Philadelphia. Uh, the Engineers' Club is one of the oldest professional organizations in the nation, founded in eighteen seventy-seven. In particular, for, um, members of council and those special district council members, uh, Engineers' Club wants to partner with council members to provide services and resources to help, um, those, uh, members of city council who are dealing with various projects in their districts, uh, that have any type of engineering aspect. Um, so it could be a great resource, uh, for members of council, not only today, to develop a relationship with Engineers' Club, but also going forward as you're doing various projects in your districts, uh, and throughout the city. So hopefully you'll be able to join us, uh, after the photo with our guests from Frankfurt. Uh, lunch will be provided, and we'll be in the caucus room, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I have a few remarks I wanted to make today. Um, as we continue to debate the city's budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, I would like to address some concerns and share what I believe could be alternatives to consider moving forward. At this moment, we've been asked to consider a proposal to raise taxes on the citizens of Philadelphia. Also, again, at this moment, the city is currently going through a process of reconciling our financial records, which includes locating twenty-seven point five million that has not been found yet from one of our financial accounts. This is a troubling fact, but one the administration is working to rectify. However, my bigger concern is rooted in a much deeper systemic problem, and that is we, as a city, have not reconciled our forty billion dollars of deposits and checks from our financial records that spans eight years. The city's payroll account, ten billion unreconciled, less from June of two thousand and ten to June of two thousand and seventeen. The city's consolidated cash account, June of two thousand and fourteen to June of two thousand and seventeen. We, we collect all our taxes in this account, including real estate and business taxes. Three years not reconciled, eleven point four billion unreconciled. The city's general disbursement account, where all the checks are written out for the city of Philadelphia, five years, two thousand and twelve of June to June of two thousand and seventeen, five years not reconciled, nineteen billion unreconciled. The city's pension account, where people who worked for the city and got paid checks, three years not reconciled, June of fourteen to June of seventeen, one point eight billion total not reconciled. And the PPDA account, ten million unreconciled. This is unacceptable for a twenty-first century world-class city like Philadelphia, unacceptable. And I believe it's our responsibility as a government to get our fiscal house in order before we ask for any increase in tax dollars. This totals forty billion of unreconciled accounts. We owe it to the Philadelphia citizens. Equally important, and maybe more important now than ever, will be our efforts to collect delinquent taxes. As of two weeks ago, the outstanding delinquent real estate taxes for this city were four hundred and twenty-five million. One hundred and ten million are in payment plans, hundred million are associated with owner-occupied properties. However, two hundred and fifteen million are non-owner-occupied properties, two hundred and fifteen million, and these accounts belong to those who can afford to pay and have chosen not to. Not one Philadelphian in our city, not one, would say that that's acceptable. The two hundred and fifteen million of delinquent taxes of non-owner-occupied properties is against five point four billion dollars of real estate value. The lien-to-value ratio is four percent. Most cities look for anything under forty percent to collect taxes. We are at four. Simply put, the lower the percent means the better opportunity to collect, especially when real estate taxes are a first lien on real estate. And I've introduced a plan to collect these delinquent taxes, which includes protections for all owner-occupied properties, as well as renters with low to moderate incomes through sequestration. We have well-established programs, whether it's UPA, sequestration, or other programs. We are willing to help those who can't afford to pay. But again, those residents would not be impacted by the proposal when we go after those who choose not to pay their taxes. Lastly, no secret, I'd like to see us take a real, hard, serious look at the prison budget. I applaud the administration, all those involved, and its tremendous work over the last three years. We have reduced the population from eighty-two-hundred to fifty-three-fifty-nine, a thirty-five percent reduction. That's amazing. But the second step is to incorporate efficiencies with that thirty-five percent reduction and find fifteen percent savings. The prison budget with fringe benefits today stands at three hundred and ninety million dollars. There's no reason why a thirty-five percent reduction in population, that the same amount of guards is required, or that twenty million in overtime costs should occur. We have also seen an increase in medical costs from forty-six million to forty-nine million, which will have cost us sixty-five percent more in three years. And with the population decreasing, we have also seen, not seen, any level of savings in food costs. I've been told over the last twelve months, and I've talked about this, that without closing a prison, we could not save substantial dollars. Well, now we're on the path to closing a prison, thanks to Mayor Kenny and the hard work of his administration. Thank you. But we need to see a fifteen percent reduction and not a fifty percent increase in cost per prisoner. Our costs have gone up from three years ago, forty-four thousand per prisoner, to today, sixty-six thousand. I'm calling for a fifteen percent reduction. This is fifty million per year of our prison budget. This is where I stand. You must first reconcile and balance all our financial accounts before, in my opinion, we increase any taxes. You must implement a strategy to improve our efforts to collect delinquent taxes from those who choose not to pay before we expect those who do pay for any increase in taxes. And we must reduce our prison budget to run parallel with our reduction in population and plans to close a prison. We can find savings and must, before we increase any taxes. Colleagues, the residents of this city expect great services, and they deserve great schools, but they also expect and deserve efficient government. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our speeches, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, at ten AM.
It's been moved in property second. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, May twenty-fourth, twenty-eight, ten, ten AM. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Can I get a aye? Thank you. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much.